Call to order, the October 22nd Port Orchard City Council Regular Meeting. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, we are to our first order of business, which is the approval of the agenda. Is there, are there any additions or subtractions or amendments to the agenda this evening?
I'd move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion, a second to approve the agenda as presented. The discussion, further discussion of the agenda. All in favor of approving the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, the agenda is approved. We're to our first citizen comment period, which is for any item on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the city council? Okay, we have a second citizen comment period at the end of the meeting. We are to our consent agenda. Have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It's a motion and a second on to approve the consent agenda as presented. From the Finance Committee, did you notice how small the point? You don't have any big construction projects, you know, we only had $300,000 in claims tonight, so.
Noticeable.
It was noticeably smaller.
It's a relief.
It is. So, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, the consent, the consent agenda has been approved. We are to our presentation, Mr. John Powers, here here with us tonight from Kitsap Economic Development Alliance. And we have your quarterly report that was presided to us. Maybe Brandy can put that up on the screen for the audience.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council, thanks for this opportunity to update you on the work of your economic development partner, Kitsap Economic Development Alliance. And then I'm going to cover the year, the first quarter of this year, July, August, September, busy time of the year, and I'm going to highlight some of your written reports. First of all, at the top of the page of Page 1, you look for the big picture of our work across Kitsap County, North and South, that's all in the twenty corporate areas as well as the rural municipalities. And if you look at our year-to-date numbers coming through the third quarter, you'll see that we're doing well on the goals, early-stage technology companies assisted, 100% of that goal, five companies directly assisted, early-stage technology firms contacted. Now that is trying to identify and find the firms that we are not yet aware of, and oftentimes in a market like ours, a lot of them are home businesses, they're under radar screen, they're small, too kind of happy, kind of clear about to establish a relationship. We're making some progress on that, around 40% of the annual goal. Startup assistance, a lot of startup assistance, including just this week at our Fall Forum, which will be Thursday, the 24th of October, at the Olympic College campus, we're presenting our Fall Forum called Launch, and it's all about startups, early-stage entrepreneurship companies. And you know, Mr. David Carter, who is well renowned in the area of technology startups, he's done co-work with Joe about seven years ago, he's a lot of success, and he's been here working in our county for the six-month startup program that Kitsap Economic Development Technology Committee itself co-sponsored. So, I invite you and the public that would like to join us this coming Thursday, the 24th, Olympic College Program begins at 2:00, and it's going to be a great panel of local business people speaking on the subject of startups as well. And then visits and presentations, that's when we're out in the field in front of a company, either just getting to know the lay of land and their needs, or presenting them in response to a request. And 126 visits and presentations through the third quarter, 50 of those occurred in the third quarter, 84% of the annual goal. Information, research, and referrals, we do a ton of research, both existing businesses and businesses that are looking at this market for the first time. Over 147 research assignments completed through the third quarter, that's 74% of the annual goals are right on the schedule there. And then finally, the last number, which is really the most important, companies directly assisted, 245 through the third quarter, 109 of those in the third quarter, so you can see it was a very active quarter. And year-to-date total, we've already eclipsed it by 40%, 140%. If you go below that big picture graph, you'll see by jurisdiction, the activity and where the clients are served. Port Orchard is the second one, second bar in, and you'll see color-coded the type of work that is done. Here in Port Orchard, you've got eight companies that were part of a PTAC program, either they extended PTAC program, or we opened up a file and then we directly assist them in government contract, and you'll see later in the report the results of that. Then the second one is recruitment, companies that expressed interest in this market, and we provide them with sites or other data sets that may fit their needs. There's no doubt in people, we provide everything within the town, whether it be within your city, uncorporate at this time, or another municipality that might fit their bill. So, 14 times, Port Orchard, these resources, assets, and goods that are presented, companies looking for opportunities. A real thin slice, you'll see a little green there, basically PTAC classes. We have a monthly coffee, and then a class to follow, and if a company wants our assistance and the permit, and the equipment, the film contract, they have to attend those initial steps to qualify. And then finally, inquiries and enforcement, we're back to research, we talked about 13 of those were directly related to the area of jurisdictions. Now, below on the business attraction activity, you'll see four cases that are listed there by case or code name. We don't identify the specific company, we give a code name because oftentimes they want that identity to be held confidentially, and we do that. So, project DK, which we are still working on, was a lead to us, given to us by Congressman Derek Kilmer. And we get leads from both business people in our area and members of the board, as well as elected officials, and I always encourage elected officials when they see, apply business to a business that could use our advice and help to refer that to us. This case is still pending, it is a large potential manufacturing facility, a large one that really could only be cited in a couple of places in the county. We're still working with that company, we'll see how it goes. The other three, although we approached them, at this point, they have decided we are not a match, and on three of those, high-power consumers looking for really low-cost rates that they find on the power administration grid or in central Washington. We have reasonable price power here in Kitsap, for seven and a half, eight cents kilowatt, which is less expensive than a lot of folks, but if you have a big power lead, sometimes you're looking for half of that cost. Page two, we've heard a lot of work from political parties, the aerospace companies that we generated, we followed up on them, mentioned this in our last presentation, we had 18 meetings, it was a four-person delegation, myself, Tim Thompson, and on that, I want to just take a personal note of thanks to Tim. We had his last meeting today as the co-chair of Kitsap Aerospace Defense Department, seven years, and now he's finally been fully retired, so we went in and wished him well just this afternoon at our port meeting. Tim was a longtime resident here in Port Orchard, many of you know him, did a great job for us, and he and his wife today, Sarah, settled in Moscow, Iowa, where they first met, and where they had the family ties, so they're back there at retirement. And our pairs are showing 18 meetings, three of those are with larger incumbent defense contractors that are already working here in this market, the Raytheon's, Lockheed's, UTC's, General Motors. And then 14 private sector businesses, four of which remain active and are interested in our community. However, I will say with a lot of issues in the aerospace industry today, around the 737 Max, and the new mid-market aircraft that we, that for two years kind of been waiting the announcement on that, there's a lot of folks who just kind of buy into time and waiting things out until the market perhaps becomes a little clearer in its signals, but we stay in touch with those companies that have shown up. Down below, you'll also see three files that were opened here in the third quarter, which is business retention expansion activity, retaining two, Port Orchard, or other areas in the community. We've got a construction consultant, a business services company that was recently opened down, and I will. I think some of you were at a KDA in the meeting in September, we did a full-blown briefing on what went on, and at that meeting, we hosted three representatives to the Boeing Aerospace Company, and were here really to support us and thank us for the good work. The school districts through Kitsap County are doing and deploying a core-plus curriculum that Boeing helped to design, that is really about science, technology, engineering, math, STEM courses, with a focus on career technical education, so that those numeracy skills, those analytical skills can be directly applied in today's real modern manufacturing environment. And there are high school students coming right out of these programs here at Kitsap County that are walking right on to the training and the assembly lines in the Boeing plants throughout the region, we're real proud of that. And we had three representatives from Boeing at that meeting to thank us for our leadership on that. In fact, CK School District, although all the school districts have these programs, CK is recognized as really one of the top ones in the state. You'll also see under the new initiatives, PTAC other, PTAC again, the early-stage assistance center is going in contact. There's a new initiative that was just identified by the Department of Defense, and it's based on a naval-based tech bridge. And Keyport, part of the five missions available at Kitsap, was selected as one of five Navy installations across the United States to participate in this technology development initiative. And what they're doing is they're coming off-base, off-campus, establishing a new presence in the community where they can partner with local engineering and technology design firms to accelerate the rate at which the Navy is already, you know, developing new technologies in navigation, propulsion, other technologies that go along with what they do at Keyport. So, we're excited about that. There'll be more news as the, as the year unfolds as to where they'll be located, but right now, we're presuming based upon the preference of Department of Defense, that we probably be as close to the Pierce Island Naval Shipyard as possible, because they want to see it next to where most of the activity is and where they can use, excuse me, can be conveniently accessed, thank you, relative to some of the folks that come to visit off the I-5 corridor. Shifting quickly to Page 5, and then I'll drop my remarks. We see our PTAC final contracts through the years and the form that are contracted with our clients, that the Navy, Customs, Coast Guard, National Parks, really a host of almost every government agency in the public can think of, that we have helped local companies connect with and contract with. And just two weeks ago, you might have read in the paper in the Sun, one of our local companies, a large construction company, or a mass and enterprise construction company, of course, Parmish, was able to compete for and win a multi-year, five-year, $100 million contract to work with Department of Defense to do a lot of infrastructure work as they prepare for a lot of capital projects here over the coming years. So, very, very excited for them. And there's a company that we started work with just four, five years ago, this wasn't really working in Department of Defense work yet, and really teed them up and positioned them for a lot of success. We saw some other companies in Kitsap, received some very large awards as well, Scookum, $30 million, and then another smaller company in Kingston, about $10 million. So, that's our bread and butter, we have local companies focused on those opportunities, and we're doing a really good job. Finally, I would point out that our fourth quarter board meeting, if you turn to Page 7, you'll see the flag on March 20th, which is right next to our Cooper 34th and 30530 at Olympic College. And we're expecting a good turnout, we have about 155 people registered right now, but room for a few more if you'd like to join us. And then I want to make mention that our fourth quarter board meeting is on December 12th, Kitsap Olympic College, and John Clausen will be providing a business briefing to our board and investors relative to current status of the Kitsap Transit Fast Air System, and we're looking forward to that. John gave his presentation to our Kitsap Commercial Investment Brokers Group about six weeks ago, John, and I think they're still talking about it. We really generated a lot of acceptance, a lot of enthusiasm from the person. So, thank him for that. And after that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have, please.
John, in the poster, it actually says that the, the meeting on Thursday is at the Kitsap Conference Center, and you've.
I'm sorry, did I say Olympic College?
Several times.
I'm sorry, the board meeting is at Olympic College in December. Thank you very much, council member. And launch is at the conference, thank you for that.
Questions for Mr. Powers? Thank you, John, for your briefing.
Thank you.
For this opportunity, and I look forward to seeing you, many, many of you before the year's out, at both the launch event and the fourth quarter board meeting at Olympic College. And know that we have our holiday party immediately following the board meeting, and you're all invited to join us. Hope you can, hope you can do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Okay, we are on to our next item, which is a couple of public hearings. The first of which is the revenue sources and property tax levy, current expense budget for 2019-2020, and satisfying the requirements of RCW 8455120. Mr. Crocker.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. The city legislative body is required to hold a revenue sources hearing on current expense budget, revenue sources for the coming year's budget, including consideration of possible increases in property tax revenues. The hearing is required before the legislative body votes on a property tax levy for the upcoming year. The deadline for setting the levy for property tax collection for 2020 is on or before November 30th, 2019. The hearing is a part of the public process that leads to an ordinance being forwarded to the Kitsap County Assessor, along with a levy certification, in order to set the property tax levy for collection in 2020. The hearing will include a presentation of the revenue sources and estimates for 2019-2020, and the hearing relates to, again, setting the 2020 levy for property tax collection in the second year of our 2019-2020 biennium. So, I'd recommend that we open first the presentation and then move to public hearing comments.
If Brandy could pull up in the presentation.
Our point.
They are beautiful. I know you're going to be impressed this time. I failed you last year, but this year's it.
Green and brown maybe.
Jeanine could maybe dim the lights.
Hey, Brandy, do we have a clicker? Wow. I like that color. So, so, did you mention it originally? When you say.
I do like the colors.
Suspense is killing me. She's going to grab a printed copy. We have probably a PowerPoint for the next one, too.
Oh, hey.
So, we'll just put it on the screen this way, with the, with the slides from the printed version.
Which while we're having technical difficulties, I would open up for discussion next year's biennial budget, some possible new technical audio equipment for consideration.
Is it your laptop, or is it the projector?
It's the laptop. It's not. I have some issues with Adobe, so I thought I had it all worked out.
Brandy, you're the only director without a Surface, and still has a laptop, so.
On the list.
You're on the list, okay. You just got, might have got moved up the list tonight.
Goes along with the audiovisual equipment in next year's budget?
Yeah. We didn't, you guys didn't fund that.
Probably haven't approved the adjustments to the budget yet.
I sense some retaliation.
Yeah. Well orchestrated.
We'll show them. They didn't fund the audiovisual improvements, so we'll crash the system tonight. You know what, why don't we make use of this time, could you turn the lights on, and we'll jump to my discussion item that's at the end, because we have two special guests.
Oh, I think it's.
Here she comes, I did. Almost got to you, Dean. I think you still want the, the lights down, so, so we can see it on the screen.
Great, okay, now we can get started. Tonight, we are to hold the public hearing on the revenue and sources as required by RCW 8455120. In accordance with this RCODA, we are required to hold this public hearing on revenue sources for the general fund in order to set the property tax levy for 2020. If you could go to the next slide, Brandy. And I'm sure you guys appreciate the colors, but you're not getting the full flavor here with this condensed-down version. Before, you used to propose biennial budget for tax revenue only. This amounts to about $20.5 million for the two-year period. In this slide, we identify three main taxing categories for the city. The sales tax at $10.145 million represents the largest tax source, the property tax at $5.741 million representing the second-largest tax source, and then finally, other taxes making up the remainder of the taxing sources for the city. In this slide, we look at greater detail on the three main taxing categories budgeted. We identify how much we've allocated for fiscal year, and the percentage of the overall tax source each represents. Again, sales tax is the largest tax source, representing nearly 50% of our biennial tax revenue. Property tax is the second-largest tax source, representing about 30% of our biennial tax revenue, with the other taxes rounding off about 20%. In the other taxes core category, we identify the top three, which represent 15% of the overall 20, which is the electric tax, the telephone tax, and our utilities. Now, in this slide, we complete the biennial picture on revenue by adding in all sources of funding. These other revenue sources are identified in the smaller pie chart with a total anticipated revenue of $3.432 million. The top three categories of these other revenue sources are intergovernmental, charges for goods and services, and licenses and permits. On this slide, we'll take a look at the 2019 actuals compared to the 2019-2020 budget. And again, it's important that when we look at this slide, when you think about the percentages, currently we're nine months through a 24-month period. And when you look at it in that context, we're about 37.5% of our biennial budget. You'll notice that the tax revenue we've received thus far is approximately 35% of the biennial budget. Sales tax is about 38%, property tax is approximately 27%, due to the timing of property tax payments. So, we do anticipate this October, we'll receive our property tax payments and hopefully complete our 2019 property tax year. Focusing on the other revenue categories, we received over 50% of other budgeted amounts. Again, point out that licenses and permits are over 50%, so these are all positives. Charges and charges for services, over 50%. And the big reason is this, because in our budgeting process, we did not budget for planning revenue that is an offsetting expense. So likewise, on the expense side, we will not have accounted for that, so it slightly skews the revenue here. Important to note that the 2019-2020 budget is built on reviewing actual history and activities. And what you want to take away from this slide is that overall, the city is on track with its revenue received compared to budget at 38%, which again, is about nine months of a 24-month period, when you look at even cash flows. The next table provides us a historic, historic property tax data, and, and the proposed 2020 tax levy to be adopted later this evening. For 2020, we are proposing a property tax levy of $2.962 million. It is important to remember that for Washington State has the most complex property tax methodology nationwide. Washington State has a budget-based system of property taxation. This means that as part of the budget process, the city establishes the amount of tax revenue needed to fund the budget. That amount need to fund the budget is called the levy, and the city establishes the levy amount, and the county will calculate the levy rate required to raise that amount of revenue, after considering all its other taxing, taxing districts. The city will certify to the county by November 30th. For 2020, again, we've identified $2.962 million levy needed. Both the levy amount and levy rate are subject to change depending on the outcome of all our other taxing districts. Again, this slide shows the property tax collections over time. You can see we've had some growth in property tax revenue collections. However, property tax collections in 2018 did not grow significantly due to the fire district levy lid lift and the library district lid lift. You also notice an interesting drop in 2011, in which the city was collecting $2.62 million. However, in 2010, the city agreed to pay $375,000 to the library, and in 2011, we agreed to pay $430,000 to the library, as well as in prior years. What the city wanted to do at the time was to have a library downtown and found it to be valuable, and that's why we made that policy decision to make that contribution. Then you see here in 2012, voters elected to become a part of the library district, thus the tax revenue was no longer being directed through the city, it was actually going to the library district. So, when we look back, it, it looks like we had a big drop in our revenue, but if you look at those last 2011, 2011 bars, and, and think through that, again, a portion of that was being contributed to the library to provide library services downtown, starting in 2012, that that tax revenue now is being directly contributed to them. So, we did not lose, it's just a misappropriation. The next slide compares 2019 and 2020, and breaks down the total levy amount. The $2.842 million was the final levy amount in 2019, and 2020, we collect an additional $11,000, but at this point, we hit our lid. We then add in new construction to our tax collections, $0 are anticipated for annexations, and then we always have a placeholder of $10,000 for state utilities. Again, this is just a placeholder, all is completed and calculated by the county, and so we'll no add later date, we're just building in a buffer to collect our full ability. Lastly, we are required by state statute to add in our refunds. This is approximately $19,000, and represents monies that were paid out to property owners after going through the dispute process. We are, we are, we are required to levy the refund amount and share amongst all the taxpayers. So, again, this brings the total for 2020 to $2.962 million. So again, this brings the total for 2020 to 2.962 million dollars. Equally as important as property tax, the city portion receives 8.4% in sales tax. Again, in this slide compares actual to our estimated by fiscal year. 2019 is showing that we are on track. Through three quarters, we have collected 78% of what we estimated for the fiscal year. Sales tax is on track, and we are, again, continuing to experience solid and sustainable sales tax growth. When comparing the first three quarters of 2018 against the first three quarters of 2019, again, we show a growth rate of about 4.26%. It is also important to mention that sales tax revenue is delayed and doesn't always show up in the month of the sales activity. For the 2019-2020 biennial budget, we budgeted the total growth rate of about 3%. So again, we are ahead of our budgeted figures. Many of the economic commentary is that there is anticipated a slowdown to come with higher probabilities of recession during 2020. So we have built that into our budget and are continuing to monitor. We are budgeting for the upside potential and again, eliminating our downside risk by taking this approach. Lastly, we recognize that people absorb information differently, so again, we just wanted to display the sales tax history on, on a graph for those visual learners. Again, this bar chart shows solid tax growth and reflects the variance in, in collections. So with that, that concludes my remarks for the presentation on the revenue sources hearing. And I'd open up to the council for questions and yield it back to the mayor to open the public hearing.
Turn all the lights on? Janine? Can you turn all the lights on? There we go. All right, thank you. All right, with that, I will open the public hearing on the resources and property tax levy for the current expense. Is anyone wishing to address the council on this matter? Okay. What we learned in our moratorium is that we should have a motion to close the public hearing. That's what Jennifer advised us. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
A second by Councilmember Kuchardi. Discussion on closing that public hearing? None, all in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is closed. Okay, we're to the council's questions. Thank you, Noah. I'm sorry that your PowerPoint presentation didn't work, but other than that, it was good, good presentation. Thank you. Councilmember Ashby?
I would just, can we get a printed copy of that?
Yes.
Yes.
Just put it in our boxes. Thank you.
Wonderful. Okay, other questions? Things are going as planned and a little better. So with that, we are to our second public hearing this evening, which is the 2019-2020 mid-biennial review and modifications amending the 2019-2020 biennial budget. Mr. Crocker.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, we're here to review and conduct the mid-biennial review. So I just want to start that by remind us what the process is and the schedule that we've gone through thus far. In the fall of 2018, the city completed its budgeting, its biennial budget and adopted ordinance number 036-18 establishing the 2019-2020 biennial budget. As established by RCW 3534-130, a mid-biennial review and modification of the biennial budget is required. This review shall occur no sooner than eight months after the start of the biennium, or September 1st, and then no later than the close of the fiscal year or December 31st. In this mid-biennial review, the finance director shall prepare proposed modifies, modifications. Proposed modifications shall be provoked record and available to the public. Council may consider proposed ordinance to carry out such modifications. Shall provide for publication and notes of hearings. Public hearing shall be advertised at least once and shall be held no later than first Monday in December. And lastly, a hearing is required whether or not the biennial budget is modified. So tonight, we gather to discuss the mid-biennial review and hold the public hearing on those proposed modifications. At the study session last week, we provided a schedule and process of the mid-biennial review. We discussed the mayor's proposal, including the finance committee's additions. We provided the financial table exhibits representing the financial impact by fund. We, we also provided the original list identified for discussion in the mid-biennial review, as well as the department request forms that were submitted. We have some extra materials in the back, if you didn't receive those last week, and for the public as well. In summary, during September, departments were provided a budget status report. The finance director reviewed budget status reports with the mayor and council to ascertain our financial condition. Council members were provided monthly budget status reports. And departments were asked to review their budgets and respond to the mid-biennial review. The city asked that this be focused criteria for modification to those items that materially affect the budget in one of three ways. We asked that they look at expenditures that need to change that reduce expenditures in a major way. Any major increases to the current budgeted expenditures. And then the third criteria was modifications or requests for new mission-critical or unforeseen major expenditures. Then in October, the mayor drafted a proposal of the bi, mid-biennial adjustments. The finance committee met, reviewed the proposed modifications, and made three additional adjustments. At the work day, we reviewed and discussed the proposed modifications and recommendations. Yesterday, we provided an additional and updated monthly budget status report to the full council as of September 30th. And now tonight, we are holding the public hearing on this, on the state of the city's revenue sources, which we just went through in that public hearing. And we are holding the public hearing for the proposed modifications and providing additional information to the public. After the public hearing, there is a business item involving budget, budget modifications and budget amendments as we've discussed at the study session. At this time, I kind of make, I want to note the importance and highlight the role of the council finance committee, which provides oversight of the city's budgeting, financial planning, and financial reporting. The city council finance committee meets monthly and at its most recent meeting, held a complete mid-biennial review and provided the feedback, suggestions, and changes we needed to continue that process forward. Now with that overall introduction of the process, I would like to highlight and summarize the mayor's proposed budget adjustments, which will come forward again later this evening. The highlights include, number one, all beginning fund balances are going to be adjusted to reflect actual beginning fund balances as of January 1st, 2019. All ending fund balances are going to be adjusted to incorporate the change in beginning fund balance and proposed revenues adjustments, as well as proposed expense adjustments. On the expenditure authorization, the financial tables in the staff report, as well as in the ordinance, identify adjustments to the biennial budget. The general, the current expense fund is, we are asking for the current expense fund to increase authority by 1.294 million dollars. The street operations fund to increase expenditure for authority by $285,000. The impact fee fund to increase expenditure authority by $72,000. Our capital construction fund to increase by $248,000, with our street capital construction fund to increase by 1.2 million dollars. Fund 401 is our previous water sewer operations fund, and again, we are asking for additional expenditure authority to close that fund out at approximately 1.435 million dollars. Likewise, we have a water sewer capital fund we would like to close out, and so we're asking for additional expenditure authority to close that fund out at $732,000. The Fund 411 Water Operations Fund also has an ask for increased expenditure authority of $502,000. Our water capital has an increased authority for $300,000. Storm operations increases by $266,000. And finally, our storm capital is being requested increased by $531,000. With that, I would ask the mayor to open and hold the public hearing.
With that, I will open the public hearing on the mid, my, mid-biennial review and modifications amending the 2019-2020 budget. Public hearing is now open. Is anyone wishing to testify on the budget amendments? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to close the hearing?
Mayor moves to close the public hearing.
Second, okay. Second by Councilmember Kuchardi. Further discussion of closing the public hearing? Hearing none, all in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. We are on to our business items, first of which is 7A, adoption of an ordinance setting the amount of property tax to be levied for the year 2020 pursuant to RCW 8455-120. Mr. Crocker.
Thank you, Mayor. Earlier this evening, we held the public hearing on revenue and sources for the current expense fund. The hearing included a presentation on and discussion of property tax consideration for collection during 2020. Reflected in the staff report is the proposed levy amounts. State law requires that we establish a maximum levy rate for the various types of taxing districts. Total city of Port Orchard 2020 property tax amount is estimated to be 2,962,675 based on, upon estimated maximum rate of 1.417 per thousand of current total assessed value. The 2020 amount is estimated until the final levy calculation is completed by the county assessor. Without overturning the recommendation to the chairman of the finance committee.
Mr. Colson? Mr. Colson?
Sorry.
I, I'm happy to make the recommendation, but I didn't know if you would like to make the recommendation either.
Please go ahead.
Okay. Staff recommends approval of the business item 7A, adoption of an ordinance setting the property tax amount to be levied for 2020.
Councilmember Ashby?
Sure. I move to adopt an ordinance setting the 2020 property tax levy and the amount of property taxes to be raised. Whoops. To be raised for the budget year of 2020.
Second.
Motion and a second, further discussion of the, the ordinance? Or questions for Mr. Crocker? Hearing none, you'll be voting on adoption of an ordinance setting the amount of property tax to be levied for the year 2020 pursuant to RCW 8455-120. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Hearing none, the motion carries. We are to 7B, adoption of an ordinance amending the 2019-2020 biennial budget as part of the mid-biennial review. Mr. Crocker.
Thank you, Mayor. Business item 7B is the actual adoption now of the ordinance amending the 2019-2020 biennial budget as part of our mid-biennial review. Same information that we've kind of gone through multiple iterations tonight and staff, and as well as study session. I'm just going to comment that I hope the tables that we're including in the ordinances make it more transparent to the public, more transparent for the council as far as how we are handling and the financial impact to the city. With that, staff would recommend that you adopt the ordinance approving the biennial adjustments.
Mr. Colson?
Mayor, I move to adopt an ordinance amending the 2019-2020 biennial budgets for the city of Port Orchard. Second.
Second by Councilmember Rosa Pepe. I think some important highlights are that we're fully funding our reserves requirements that we started, gosh, seven or eight years ago. And we, this budget allows us to finally get to that, so then we'll only be adding small amounts to maintain those, those levels versus making significant investments in our reserves. Residential, street paving are important. Funding a study to prepare bid documents for a future budget to make some improvements to City Hall, maybe even some audio visual equipment. But siding and windows and a roof are important, too. And some important security improvements, too, to the building have been funded. We need to replace our old keys with card, modern card keys and, and some video equipment in the hallways, so. Those are some of the highlights. So other questions you may have, yes, Mr. Chang?
I had a question about the, the retrofitting of the splash pad. And I don't know if you sent me an answer.
You, he did.
Okay.
Earlier in the week. And your question was, that park project was what, 1.2 million, Jim? You know, you were, I'm not, Jim Fisk is here filling in for planning.
I was involved at the very tail end of that.
Okay.
Had nothing to do with that.
Of that, the splash pad was about 113,000. We didn't anticipate at all the popularity of that splash pad and the amount of water that was using. It kind of caught us all off guard. We, we should have, had we known what we know today, built that recirculating water system into, in the original plans, so. We're estimating high at 100,000. I think it could be done for about 75,000 by, and I believe the developer at McCormick Woods is going to do that for us.
Okay, because the way I read it, it looked like there were two 100,000 amounts, and I thought, is the retrofit really 200,000?
No, it's, it's 100,000. And it will, we're working on an agreement with Bremerton. And this is, this is in their water service area, and this is a big deal to them, and it will be part of, they're going to give us 18 months to retrofit this or turn it off. And so I'm hopeful that we can come to an agreement with the McCormick developer. They verbally said that they, once we get the moratorium lifted and we get things back moving, that they're interested in doing this, these modifications. It represents a number of connections that could be, you know, serving homes out there.
I realize it's immensely popular, it's just the other night, I was thinking about some of the numbers I heard. And one that I kept thinking about was the estimate that it was 8 to 10,000 dollars in water every month.
It's for, for those few months, yes.
The summer months.
The summer months, correct. It doesn't use any water when it's turned up, yeah. It'll pay for itself very quickly. Yeah. Yeah, we had no idea that that many kids would be, well, and it's, it's not like we're running it when it's not being used. It's children running up, hitting, hitting, hitting the button and turning it on.
So by recycling, is that water going to be reused?
In, back in the fountain. So yes, it'll treat it, it'll go into a tank, and then then.
So it's like giving them showers, in a sense.
Yes, and we have to treat it that way.
Like a swimming pool.
Okay.
That's exactly, we have to treat it that, in that manner, according to the Department of Health. So, yeah, and, and one idea we had was initially, was to put it just in a bio swale. But once it touches, comes into the human contact, it has to be treated by, according to health, it has to be treated as, you know, like, it's like sewer. Even though it's really just, you know, passed over somebody.
Lots of sunscreen in that stuff.
Lots of sunscreen and, yeah, who knows what else the kids have done. Let's just not go there.
I know. I'm sorry, Mayor. On a, on a serious note, I mean, the popularity of that park with all the adjacents and people coming up from the, from historic Port Orchard has been amazing, and I think we've seen that usage this time and time again. It's a very popular park.
Yes, it is.
And Mayor, if I just come back to Councilmember Chang's question on the 200,000. The, the expenditure itself for the cost of the project is budgeted at 100,000. What you're seeing is another 100,000, and this is really an accounting thing, so I'm very excited you pointed this out. It's really a transfer from one fund to another.
Oh.
But to one fund, it is an expenditure, the transfer represents an expenditure from one fund to another, and so that's where you're coming up with the 200,000. It's actually a transfer to get it into the proper capital fund to do the project. But the expenditure for the project is only 100,000 dollars.
And we hope much less than that, but I hate coming back with change orders because we're 10,000 dollars over. We estimate it high. Other questions? Okay. With that, you'll be voting on adoption of an ordinance amending the 2019-2020 biennial budget as part of the mid-biennial review process. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the budget amendment has been approved. We are to item C, which, believe it or not, isn't Mr. Crocker's. Debbie Lund from our HR coordinators here, and she's going to talk about the adoption of an ordinance providing a high deductible medical option plan for our non-union employees. So Debbie Lund.
Thank you very much. Good evening. As you know, employee benefits are very particular to individual employees, and individual employees have different family needs for their insurance. So tonight's request is to ask you to add to those options. High deductible medical plans offer a lower monthly premium and come with individual tax-sheltered health savings accounts for those employees who qualify for such an account. Offering high deductible medical plans already offered through the Association of Washington Cities, where we buy the rest of our insurance, adds an attractive alternative to the city's benefit package mix. This would be for non-union employees only, as the mayor said. At this point, if the unions want to negotiate it when their contracts are up, we would entertain that at that time. It does provide a cost savings to the city, which is in an informational exhibit in your materials. So requesting that council approve this as an option for our non-union employees.
Councilmember Kuchardi.
Mayor, I move to adopt an ordinance which adds high deductible.
Mayor, I move to adopt an ordinance which adds high deductible medical plan options to the medical insurance plans offered to non-union employees effective January 1st, 2020.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions for Debbie about this offering? I'd just want to thank Debbie for bringing this forward. I think it's great to have this as an option for some of our employees that may want this. And it's savings to the city also, if they choose to. So any other questions? All right. With that, you'll be voting on adoption of an ordinance providing a high deductible medical plan option for non-union employees. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are to 7D, which is back to Mr. Crocker again. Adoption of an ordinance establishing certain employee benefits for non-union employees. Mr. Crocker?
Thank you, Mayor. Employee wage rates are addressed on a yearly basis for non-union employees requested by the finance committee. The following is a change that is recommended by the finance committee. All employees covered by this ordinance shall be classified and compensated in accordance with the city's biennial budget. Effective January 1st, 2020, the rates of pay for non-union employees shall be increased by 2 and 3/10ths percent. Staff recommends adoption of ordinance authorizing rate of pay increase of 2.3 percent COLA for non-union employees effective January 1st, 2020. And the only additional comment, I just want to reiterate that this city of Port Orchard has a practice of treating their non-union employees in this manner, tying their COLA increases to that of our union-represented employees. And as of January 1st, all our union-represented employees, those will go into effect without council action because they're by contract. We've already adopted this. So this is really treating and addressing the rest of the city that isn't governed by a contract and treating them fairly in accordance with their colleagues. So thank you for that.
Councilmember Klaassen?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt an ordinance approving the employee benefit policy to reflect a rate of pay increase of 2.3 percent COLA effective January 1, 2020 for non-union employees.
Second. Second by Councilmember Chertin. Questions for Mr. Crocker? Pretty well. All right. With that, you'll be voting on establishing certain employee benefits for non-represented employees. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are to 7E, adoption of an ordinance authorizing an additional 1 FTE for the Information Technology Division in adopting a job description and setting a salary range. Mr. Crocker?
Thank you, Mayor. The Information Technology Department is a critical function of city business and operations. The city currently has an approved 1.0 FTE in the IT department with a duty split amongst two individuals. Additionally, the city contracts out for the additional desktop and server support to assist the city. While this structure has worked, the city recognizes it may not be a sustainable organizational structure going forward as the staff size, needs, and utilization of the technology increases. The current primary IT specialist is targeting a 2020 retirement date, and the secondary IT support has communicated that the workload is becoming unsustainable with her other duties. With the retirement of the primary IT specialist, the city needs overlap time to allow for training and transition of institutional knowledge on the systems, servers, processes, and status of our IT infrastructure. This overall would require the city to add an additional 1.0 FTE. Now, moving forward, the city expects to recruit and hire a full-time network administrator to provide these IT services. The city anticipated that this need would occur during the 2019-2020 biennial budget process, and thus it has already been financially accounted for. Staff would recommend that we approve the ordinance as presented.
Councilmember Lucarelli.
I move to adopt an ordinance adding an additional 1.0 FTE for IT services, adopting a job description for network administrator, and setting a salary range.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Klaassen. And it's in the whereas's, but I just want to be clear. We're intending to hire a full-time IT administrator, and then once, and have an overlap period, once this new person is fully trained, our other person will retire, and we'll be back, and we will reduce the FTE count by that half an FTE. But we need that overlap and your approval to have the FTE account increased temporarily. You know, in the end, it'll be a half more than we have.
The one and a half.
Yeah, we're going to go to one and a half.
And not going to two.
Correct. We'll be at two for a period of time, a half temporarily, back down to a one and a half after the interim period.
So the staff that serves as the backup now will continue that, but we anticipate that workload would be reduced?
Yes.
Yes, yeah. And this, again, this is to get us through-
So that it's manageable for the rest of her job duties?
Yes. And so we're going to reevaluate this when we do the 21-22 biennial budget. This is just to get us through this budget period, and then we'll have to reaffirm everything, and so we'll evaluate the time. But yes, the intent is to have the one full-time and in some small role with backup services.
Right.
But much reduced.
Even with one, even if we shift some of that burden, that other person still gets a day off, calls in sick, goes on vacation, so we need that redundancy.
Right.
So other questions?
Is the salary suggested in exhibit B comparable or competitive with what we are looking for?
Yes. Debbie Lund, our HR coordinator, has done an excellent job in reviewing job descriptions, making sure titles and job descriptions match, and then going out to the marketplace and saying, are we attracting and advertising the right salary range for the services we're asking for? So I would state this as a, make this as a true statement for anything you see coming forward from us from HR. Debbie's doing a fantastic job, and we're learning a lot by her efforts in evaluating job descriptions and what's really in there, what we're asking of folks. And so, absolutely.
Other questions? We answer your question? Yep.
I think that's great. It seems a little low to me, but I'm obviously not in that position of looking for. It's just a competitive field in this area, and I hope we can find someone for that amount.
And sometimes we find after a few weeks or a month that we can't attract somebody, and I'm unfortunately back here saying, we need to adjust this, or we need to change the job description because we can't attract talent. So I hope that's not the case, and this is a great place to work and good benefit package. And, you know, Debbie's done her homework, and I hope she's right. But you're correct. It's an extremely competitive job market out there right now. There's no doubt about it. So with that, you'll be voting on the adoption of an ordinance authorizing an additional 1.1 FTE for the Information Technology Division. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are to the item that Mr. Fisk is here. So Mr. Fisk is here for Nick Bond. Nick Bond and Mark Dorsey are at a grant writing and information conference put on by the state and learning about all the grant programs that exist in our state and how to apply for those grants. So this business item needed the planning department, so our senior planner, Jim Fisk, is here to tell you about the adoption of a resolution adopting the final plat for Mirrorfield Phase 2 in McCormick Woods. Mr. Fisk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. For the record, Jim Fisk, Department of Community Development, and I agree with your statement that this is a great place to work. So just want you all to know that, that staff feels that way. So this item is a final plat for McCormick Woods Phase 3, which was approved by the county in 1990. There was a final environmental impact statement for the whole development that was approved in 1985. This particular piece of property is part of parcel C. A few months ago, you saw the first phase of Mirrorfield, pardon me, Mirrorfield, and you all approved that. It has been recorded, pardon me. That subdivision dedicated, dedicated all of the public infrastructure associated with this final plat. This final plat contains 18 single-family residential lots. As I stated before, all the public infrastructure was dedicated in Phase 1. So this is really a very large short plat. There is no dedication or anything like that. It's just the creation of these 18 lots. All the streets in the subdivision are public, and with that, staff recommends approval of this final plat and the resolution in your backup.
Councilmember Rosa Pepe.
I move to adopt a resolution as presented granting final plat approval for plat of Mirrorfield Phase 2.
Second.
A motion and a second. And it's important to note, too, this is in the area that's subject to the moratorium. We are approving the lots, but they are subject to the moratorium until we get those agreements in place. So, but trying to get all the things in place so that once that moratorium is lifted, they can go back to work building houses. Questions for Mr. Fisk or myself? Okay. With that, you'll be voting on the adoption of a resolution adopting the final plat of Mirrorfield Phase 2 McCormick Woods. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We're to 7G, which is the approval of the October 8th council meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I'd move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on October 8th, 2019.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Klaassen. Any amendments other than the ones, you've got a redlined version on the dais, shows that Mayor Protam Ashby was present and that Councilmember Lucarelli was absent. So all in favor of approving those minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? One abstention. Okay. We are to our discussion item. We have two special guests. You guys kept asking me questions about KRCC's program and Housing Kitsap program, so I brought the experts tonight so that maybe we can get some direction from you. So I will cover the highlights, I guess, quickly, and then let, or maybe I'll just have, we have Bridget, Bridget, what's your, Glasspole, from KCR, Kitsap Community Resources. Do you want to just come to the microphone and tell us a little bit about your program? And they've got some information in there.
Bridget, and I am the manager at Housing Solutions Center at Kitsap Community Resources. Housing Solutions Center is coordinated entry for Kitsap County, so we see everyone in Kitsap County that identifies as homeless, street shelter car placed not meant for habitation, or those at imminent risk of homelessness. So they have a pair vacate notice. We connect them to funding. We connect them to resources in the community. We maintain the interest pool for shelters, so everybody comes to us, gets a screening for vulnerability, and they get placed into programs according to their vulnerability score. We have different sites in Bainbridge, Port Orchard, Paulsboro, and in Bremerton. So the RFP that I wrote was to try to get rental assistance and utility rental assistance for both seniors and veterans within the city limits of Port Orchard. I brought some hard numbers with you because I kind of feel like homelessness is shocking. I'm from LA, and you see homelessness. I don't feel like when I'm in Kitsap County, I really see it. So I brought some numbers with you. So for countywide, for the first three quarters of this year, we saw 1,944 households that either identified as homeless or at imminent risk. 894 of those people identified as homeless. Street shelter car placed not meant for habitation in our county. 1,050 identified as homeless. And then I brought you the breakdown for Port Orchard since it's your home right here. My staff member in Port Orchard saw 302 people. 93 identified as homeless and 209 identified as at imminent risk. Of those, 36 of those were seniors identifying as over, being over the age of 60, and 21 identified as being veterans. Of those 306, or 302 people that he saw within those first three quarters, only 60 were able to receive funding. That's how limited our funding was. Only four of those seniors and veterans received funding. So there's just a really a need out there for funding. And so writing the RFP, I was wanting to help those people that we don't have funding to help, or our funding just runs out before they come in, to help those individuals either get off the street and locate housing and/or not lose the housing that they're in.
There was a question at our last meeting, too, about the $2,000 cap. So Bridget, how does that work?
So, so the current money I have right now, it's, you could get up to 1,500 for the year, but we go off a 30% AMI, which breaks down to a person can't make over $1,308 for, per month. So this one, we were going to write it at 50% AMI, which is roughly about $1,500 per month that a person can make. So we wanted to expand the dollar amount because obviously if you're making more money, your rental, the place you're renting probably is going to cost a little bit more. And then, too, if you're behind in rent, sometimes the 2,000 can catch you up with a month and a half. Sometimes if you're looking for that deposit and first month's rent, $2,000 can help you get into the door. And I can also give you, just to have you an idea, the seniors that identified in this, in South Kitsap of, with the amount that we saw, their average income was 1,079, and the average income of the veterans seen in Port Orchard was $554 a month.
Questions for Bridget before we ask Dean to come up?
So you listed some alternatives or some programs that you try and push people into. So if those programs don't work, or you, I guess, let me restate my question. You push them into those programs where you can, and then if it doesn't work, then you would come and look at this kind of assistance for those people.
Correct. If we have, if we have rental assistance and already available, we would use our funding first. To give you an idea, one of my grants, I get about 350,000 a month, or 350,000 for the year, and I release about 35,000 a month for my staff to spend. Sometimes 35,000 is spent in four days. Sometimes it lasts two weeks. Just depends on the influx of how many people are coming into HSC each day. Some days, we get a drizzle of three, four people that come in, and sometimes we have 30 people in our door. It just kind of depends. So sometimes our money goes quickly and sometimes it doesn't. So this could be like the overlap. If our money was spent out on the 12th, and a veteran or a senior comes in after the 12th, we can then put them with this fund.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I wouldn't see a problem with if they got one funding and then they use the other later on within the year, too. If you see how low their incomes are, they probably need more help. It's hard to live on that little amount of money.
Councilmember Ashby?
Yeah, the $2,000 you're talking about, that's the most one individual can get for the year.
Correct.
But they could get it in multiple disbursements, if that's what they need.
Correct. Sometimes we have, for instance, some of our veterans are living in an Oxford house, and an Oxford house might be 350 or 400 dollars a month, and they might come in in February and say, hey, you know, I didn't use my, the money that I have because I got my car fixed. Can you help me with rent? And then they come later down in July, and they ask for assistance again because something else happened. So it would be, you know, they can use it multiple times not to exceed the 2,000.
Go ahead.
Well, it's really not important, but if we deployed our funds with you, and, again, it's a limited amount, it's $30,000, and this person came in in February and used $500 of their 2,000, the rest of that 2,000 may not be eligible for them because we may have used it on other citizens prior to-
Correct.
There's a limit to the dollars we're putting in the bucket.
Right, 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 right.
That's right.
Correct.
Councilmember Chang?
I have a quick question, but it may not relate, so if it doesn't tell me, what are some of the real quick reasons that people wouldn't qualify for assistance is, other than making too much income per month?
So, so right now, the funding that my department has is from the BHO, so it's behavioral health organization, so they have to be in services for mental health or chemical dependency. So if they're not currently or have not been in services for the last six months, they don't qualify for the money that I currently have. We have our housing department that has money as well, but their programs open, like, we had, the last three months, we had two rapid rehousing programs open. So you're talking, all these people are kind of fighting for those two spots. So there's just, there's never enough.
Other questions for Bridget? Okay. Don't go far.
Okay, thank you.
We're going to invite Dean up if we could, and he's going to talk about Housing Kitsaps' program to rehab low-income homeowners' homes. So Dean Nail from Housing Kitsap.
Yeah, hi. I'm the single-family director for Housing Kitsap, and the mayor asked me to come speak about our rehab program that we currently do with Kitsap County now. It is- It is, I assume we would model it after our CDBG rehab program where we do serve existing homeowners in, in the city of Port Orchard, either mobiles or, or homes to people at 50% or below. And so, we do, basically, we'll do an inspection, we'll come in, make sure they're income-qualified, we'll do an inspection, look for deficiencies, and we'll prioritize on health and safety and then move into, you know, roofing, siding, other, other issues, access into the home, things like that. This, while it's a relatively small amount, we, we receive about 200,000 a year from the, the county, so this would actually supplement the program pretty well. Joel is full-time employed and we do run out of funds towards the end, end of the year, and he, he works in other programs, but this would continue the program for the rest of the year.
Questions for Dean? Okay, thank you, Dean. So, as Councilmember Ashby pointed out, we only have about 30,000 dollars. Administratively, we'd like to pick a program versus, I think they're both extremely worthy programs. It's, how do you say to no to any of it, but there's just not, you know, we've got something and, and we want to do some good with it. And if I could get some direction from you, I'd, I'd really like to get up, start negotiating on a contract with one of the two organizations if I could. So, you want to share your thoughts individually and maybe I can kind of get a gauge for what I should be doing with next steps? Anybody want to, Councilmember Rose?
So, my understanding is that we can't, we can't split it, it's all or nothing, correct?
We could split it. I, I just don't know, with, with Dean's program, the average amount is 7,000 dollars, and the grants range from eight to 18,000 dollars.
No, I understand that.
And then, and the administrative costs to us and the other organization to, to draw contracts and bring them before you, it's, it's probably not the most efficient thing to do with the dollars. Yeah. So, I'd like to, I wish I had a couple hundred thousand dollars to put to this, but it, it appears it's going to be about 30. So, Councilmember Lucarelli?
It does appear that the Kitsap Community Resources would make, would be able to go further with the amount of money and I'm just saying that the Kitsap Community Resources could go further with the money because of the, the 2,000 cap on the funds administered. And to be honest with you, too, I mean, there's a bit of administration, it's 8.3%. That's a little more appealing than a 10%. I know that's.
1.1.3%.
I know, but whenever we can cut.
We would help more individuals with this because of the cap on the smaller amount.
I'm leaning in that direction mainly because of that and the number of people we could help, including seniors and veterans.
Okay. Others wishing to give me some direction? Councilmember Deener?
Sure, I, I will agree with, with Councilmember Lucarelli, and I would lean towards Kitsap Community Resources. I think that the, the issue of, of losing your house because you can't make rent is a big deal, and so I see that going further, and I'd like to support that.
Others have opinions? Mr. Chang, Mr. Clausen?
I'll just make a comment. If I'm hearing things correctly, I mean, we all know there's a serious, you know, issue with, with homelessness out there, and I think maybe a tiebreaker for me is this is really helping people to get into homes versus rehabbing homes for people that already have homes, and so as a tiebreaker for limited funds, I think that, that feels, feels right to me. So, KCR would probably be my vote.
Mr. Clausen?
I will reiterate what I mentioned before when we talked about it. I, I kind of leaned towards the rehab homes issue for a couple of reasons. One is it keeps people from becoming homeless if their homes aren't habitable. And two, it, it certainly just improves the housing stock in our community by making these agreements, like, I'm new rough, but, you know, I, on the fence, I would support whatever the majority wants to do in whichever direction. It is a limited amount of funds, so.
Kitsap?
I'll go with Kitsap.
Housing Kitsap?
Yes.
Housing Kitsap?
Housing Kitsap.
Okay, okay. So, I got two, and Mr. Chang?
I, I think they're both very worthy programs. I would also go with KCR, though. I think it, it does look like it might reach more individuals.
All right. I think I've got.
There is not a wrong answer.
There isn't, there isn't a wrong answer. I wish I could, we could, we had one, so. Do you have any opinion you want to share, Councilmember Ashby? I think I've got direction here.
Right, no, I'm, I would, I would lean towards KCR also simply because you're helping more people. And this is the first year we've had funds available, and I guess what I want to say is, in the future, is there any way we could figure out how to leverage that 30,000 to get more money available to help these vulnerable people?
Yeah.
You know, we haven't had the time to explore that, and I don't know what that would look like, but it would just, after hearing the, the numbers one more time, it's staggering the need in our community, so.
I think every community in the county is doing something a little different. I know, I, what I'm hearing from Pauls Bow is they're contemplating purchasing a boarding house and operating a boarding house. County has, obviously, their dollar amount is much larger, and we're having some conversations with Housing Kitsap on, on potentially funding a project. And I haven't heard a whole lot what Bainbridge is, tends to do, or Bremerton, they're all, everybody's in this, but everybody's got a little different spin on it. Our pot was, wasn't very big, and so, you know, if we, it's time is, and, you know, pursuing grants and other things are, would be the challenge to that, but it's definitely something we should, should be doing is helping any way we can. So, with that, I'll be, sounds, sounds like I'll be reaching out to Bridget here later this week, first part of next week, and we'll start working on a contract that I'll bring back. Mr. Clausen?
Yeah, is this something that we're going to revisit on an annual basis, or is that the expectation the agreement will be for a 12-month period?
I think that'll be the intent, is we'll do, we'll do an a, one-month contract with an option to renew, yeah, excuse me, yeah, one-year contract with an option to renew. And we'll have a better idea, too, really, what the revenue is, too, in the second year. And we've got to remember, even when we start, you know, recognizing these dollars, it's going, you know, there's a 60, it's sales tax, there's going to be 60-day lag till we get them, so it's not like we're going to come right out of the gate next year and, and have dollars to put in this, but I want to get the agreement in place, and as soon as we get the dollars, then let Bridget know, you know.
Do we understand how that works? Because this is a tax that already is being collected, it's just a matter of diverting it from the state to us, so it's not like you're implementing a new sales tax.
We're all learning. It's, yeah.
So, how soon the money will arrive is yet to be determined.
You get different answers from different people.
Is that right?
So, we just know we had.
Any of them in authority?
We, we know that we have certain deadlines to meet, to, that we had, earlier this year, we had to say we intended to take it and notify the state of that, and then we have some deadlines for, for implementing a plan and, and putting the resources to work. And so, trying to meet that, once we have that contract, we'll get the money on the street as soon as we, as soon as we receive it.
I would just finish my comments with two things. One is I would hope that whatever the agreement is that we have, is that there's some tracking and reporting on its effectiveness, and the second one would be not so much with the agreement, but gives us an opportunity, and I, I really appreciate back what you were saying about using this as a leverage for something more, gives us the time to explore what other opportunities might be out there with matching a grant or something, just don't know what's there.
Yeah, the, the other thing that we do know is that the funds that'll be available to us are capped at whatever the number comes in, I believe it's after December 31st of this year. I think it's.
Correct.
The revenues, the sales tax of December 31st, 2019. If, it's my understanding that if sales tax revenue is less than that, we may get less in the future, but if it's more than that, it's capped at whatever we get this year. So, we won't, it won't, we will not see an increase in that dollar amount.
So, yeah, well, that's my understanding also, and once, once we get to this first year, we'll have, we'll know what that number is.
And will that be dispersed to us on a monthly basis then? So, really, you're taking 30 divided by 12?
I, I don't know.
I think so.
We're all learning.
When the money comes in, I'll let you know, and Bridget also, so.
Yes, the only thing I'd add is that there is another step in the process. We did the resolution of intent, and then from that, we said, hey, we, we're going to see what's out there and make a plan, and that's what we're doing tonight. Welcome these two in, and now you guys can give us direction where you want us to go, and now we'll come back with an ordinance, kind of confirming the direction and the plan. So, hopefully, when we bring back the ordinance, Councilmembers Clausen will be able to answer all these questions as far as what we expect the time and cash flow to be in the ordinance as well.
This was more about.
I would think that someone in the state would know how this is going to be distributed, but I'm assuming.
Yeah, I also, just to throw it out there, Councilman Chang thought the same thing. I know there's another deadline on July 1st, so in the back of my mind, I always thought that it would not be available to us until July of next year, July of 2020, but I, I may have made that up.
Yeah, and so, I kind of want to support what the mayor said. I've heard multiple stories from multiple districts.
And multiple dates.
And so, the next step is to actually go, start working through this piece of that, and then hopefully we'll have better answers.
I, what I don't want is if the date is January 1st and we don't have an agreement.
We're not ready.
That we're not ready and we can't deploy the dollars, so that's, I'm just really, tonight was just about getting you information, getting some direction, so we can go to work on drafting our plan and bringing back an ordinance and answering those, excuse me, remaining questions. So, I would thank you both for attending. You're welcome to hang around for the rest of this exciting meeting, but appreciate you being here. So, we are to our council committees. Is Finance Committee, I.
Well, I'm happy to report that we have a date for the next Finance Committee. It will be in November 12th at 5:30 here at City Hall.
Okay. And most of what your last meeting was about was presented here tonight, so.
Right.
Matter of fact, all of your last meeting. So, next is Economic Development Tourism?
Yes, and our scheduled date would be, fall on the holiday of Veterans Day, so we will be meeting the following week on the 18th, 9:30 here at Council Chambers.
Okay, and Utilities, I think you met earlier in the week?
We did, actually. One of the highlights of the meeting was a discussion about whether to continue the fall and spring cleanup. We've decided to have this come back to the full council at a study session. It's beginning to cost us quite a lot as a city, 22,000 dollars just in wages, and that doesn't even include benefits, plus quite a few problems. Public Works is quite tied up, and we don't have the staff to really be able to handle this cleanup the way it was in the beginning. We have almost twice as much area or more than that, and people are taking advantage of the situation and leaving large piles of garbage, mainly trash. So, we have to take a look at this. We're going to bring this information to a study session so we can see if we want to completely eliminate it, or maybe just one of the others, the fall or the spring. You'll be seeing that soon. Another thing is we were presented with a timeline for the city projects. We'll get that, a copy of each of these to all of the council members. It's just interesting to see where we are with our utilities. Ed McCormick Sewer Pump Station Number Two is moving along beautifully, looks like November 18th. That's when we're going to go online, is that seem right?
That's Lift Station One.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I say two?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, it's one.
And Lift Station Two goes out to bid, is out to bid.
I'm, I'm sorry, I said the wrong one. But here it is, and I actually stopped in to see it yesterday, so, and it's high-tech. It's amazing, it's really, did you see all of this? Yeah. So, anyway, move, moving along nicely with that, and our next meeting is going to be November 18th, I guess.
So, if you remember, the, we, there, we have two, Lift Station One and Lift Station Two, they're twins of each other.
Yes.
Developers build this Lift Station One, we're, we've designed Two, and it's, it's out to bid right now, should be end of November before the council, if everything goes as planned, for you guys to award that contract, and we'll, I would think that work would start about the first of the year with the contractor. Sewer advisory?
November 6th, 6:30 PM here at City Hall.
Perfect. Land use?
We're scheduled to meet November 4th, 9:30 at DCD.
Lodging tax?
No, 1:00 PM, 1:00 PM.
1:00 PM, that's right, there was a time change, thank you.
1:00 PM, okay. And lodging tax?
We're bringing our recommendations to the council, our first meeting in November, and so for our next meeting would be in October of 2020, so we can at least put that on the list instead of TBD.
All right. So, we're to Chimes and Lights, it's getting close to.
Chimes and Lights, oh, we're really getting close. So, the brochures should be here probably within the next week or so, and we're getting those distributed. We're just mostly working on the logistics of the event. Public Works is really helping us out quite a bit, and still working on tree sales. We'll be putting these in the planters this week and looking for probably another 20-some sales, tree sales. So, if you haven't purchased the tree and you've been wanting to, this is the week.
This is the week.
This is the week.
And how much are the trees?
50 dollars.
50 dollars.
So, you could buy several.
Great.
Kitsap fans could buy, you know, the whole south side here.
Wow. All right, moving on to outside agencies, only, I was, attended the APTA, American Public Transit Association's annual conference last week, and it's always, it's always insightful. I, I think, and I've heard this bef, some of this before, but I think probably the, the best session I went to at the conference was about the first and last mile and local government's role in that, and how important to a transit station or transit stop having, you know, good sidewalks and ADA accessible ramps and bike paths and pedestrian paths, and the importance they have, the important role they play in public transportation, so just, I think, I thought that was really relevant to some of the discussions we've had here lately, so I just wanted to share that. So, on to the mayor's report, unless you have anything for, I know the retreat is Friday.
Right, the KRCC retreat is Friday, I believe. Councilwoman Rosa Pepti will go with me because I believe you're unavailable.
Yeah.
And both.
Mark and Nick.
Mark and Nick will be there.
Mark's going to be late, he's got a morning meeting, but he'll be in the afternoon. And your lunches, we've got that figured out, so just show up and have lunch.
Yeah.
Don't worry about getting reimbursed, so, okay. And then Thursday is the, as we heard, KIA's meeting also. And so, on to my mayor's report, last meeting, I, master mayor's report, we talked about the county's fireworks ban, and as I, we dug into that farther, what I didn't realize is that ban that the county did was only for one year. It wasn't, it wasn't a ban on those particular products in, in perpetuity, it was just for the one year. So, I didn't realize that when I, when we're having that discussion, so is there any, that kind of changes, for me, anyway, but it, you're the policy board here, so I wanted to do, we were discussing matching the county, and now I found out the county didn't change it permanently, it was only temporarily. So, I just, your thoughts on that?
And it was actually supposed to be gauged each year by the conditions.
Okay.
Whether it was specially dry or whatever, the fire conditions, so evaluated every single year.
Okay.
That was my recollection, when they were talking about it at the county on the western coast, this area and a place in California were the two hotspots, and so that's why that came forward, but I think what this does highlight is that we need to be prepared to, if that gets picked up again, all join in that discussion and not just have the county running solo on that.
And the difference is the county has a fire marshal.
Right. Right.
Okay? And we, our fire authority is, South Kitsap Fire is our fire marshal, and they have that authority, we've given them that authority. So, they could have taken action, but they're, I don't believe they can do a partial, they don't have the authority to do a partial ban. They could ban fire, personal fireworks altogether, or not.
Huh.
And is, is my understanding of the ordinance that we have on the books. Councilmember Rosa Pepe?
Mayor, I think part of the discussion was that we wanted to give people enough notice, so, you know, so that they could do their businesses, and I'm not sure that if we wait to see how summer's going, that we could do enough, you know, notice on that, because I believe part of the discussion about whether they were gonna ban fireworks in total at one point in time.
Yeah. And the argument, too, was that while the county banned that, the sales all happen in the city. And then, I believe, we started discussing that, and it was eleventh hour, and all, most of those stands are run by nonprofits who had that inventory and the impacts to them. So, I'm, I'm just trying to get out in front of, of that, and those, what were deemed more dangerous items, like the things, you know, the roman candles and the bottle rockets and things, and the spinning.
I think the other thing we talked about was that, that we would want to do it as a public hearing and get the community's input on that, and I'm still not opposed to doing that in preparation for, at least we'll have an opportunity upfront to hear what the community's thoughts are.
Okay. So, do you still want us to bring back more information, maybe have a public hearing, and consider permanently banning the things that the county did temporarily? That's, that's really the question.
And I'm supportive of a public hearing. My concern is if, we would need to be flexible enough in our ordinance, that if the county changed what they were not allowing, we would need to be able to change our ordinance.
Or maybe they'll follow our lead.
Or maybe they'll follow our lead. I just, if we do, if we do something, hard code it, and then the county does something different than that, you know, and how do you police any of it, or, I don't know.
My only concern with that is if we were to do a public hearing, and we heard from the community that they wanted to keep X and Y and ban A and B, we establish our ordinance, I would have, be hard-pressed to go in, just because the county took a different tact to change what we heard from our community, so.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
Okay, so, continue. I just, I got more information, I realized, well, this isn't what I thought it was.
Right.
Do we know when the nonprofits do their ordering? Can, can we find that out? Because there may be a time issue.
I think that would be helpful. If we were gonna make an annual decision, we need to know when does that decision need to be made, so that we're not putting-
Kinda early spring.
Yeah, I, I think if we get on this and do this in January and February, we're gonna be fine. If we wait until spring and, in, in the early summer, then we run the risk of doing exactly what we tried not to, we didn't wanna do last year.
So, I, see, they're, they're gonna have to order far enough advance where we wouldn't really know the, the dryness of the conditions until probably mid-June.
Right.
Right? They would've, they'd be already open, to be honest with you, right? I mean, almost open, they, their inventory would be in. So, unfortunately, I don't think that would, that would ever be feasible.
And I, I don't think what we're discussing here is doing something temporary, is are there certain fireworks that are, do we wanna engage with our community and find out, are there certain fireworks that we just don't wanna have in our community because they're dangerous and they run a fire, they present a fire risk all the time, you know? So, so, okay, I, I think I got enough direction that we do wanna hold a public hearing and consider this. And so, I, I am, I know what, I know what to do, I think. We'll be back in January and have a public hearing. I know what to do at the moment until it changes. So, all right. Debbie Lund shared with me today, our online job portal went live today, which is exciting, and we posted our Assistant City Engineer job on it. We're cautiously optimistic that the salary range and the job descriptions were right for the market, and if it's not, I hope not to be talking to you again about this job. So, there's been a lot of discussion about whether or not to split those duties out of Mark Dorsey's wheelhouse or not, and for right now, we're gonna post the job as it's, as it's written, and see what, what's out there in the marketplace, and hopefully, we can attract the right person to the, to the job description we have. Another discussion we had related to HR is, we've got money in the budget for a salary survey, and I've had Debbie researching, doing a, what we're gonna refer to as a strategic workforce plan, and it's gonna be an assessment of the city's organizational structure and the staffing demand forecast looking today and five years, at least five years out, with our peer group, and if we use our projected growth targets, are our peers going to change, and what should the city look like? So, we can do a better job planning for, it just seems like we're running from fire to fire on personnel, and I, and I'd like to, as we engage a consultant that's an expert in this, and we found there's at least three out there that are on the state's roster, or MSRC's roster for these type of services. So, I'm hopeful we can find somebody that, that does this in salary surveys and roll it into one contract, but that would be too simple. So, I'm not sure that we're gonna be able to do that. So, we just started talking about this today, but I just think it's, we've just been growing in this organization, and I wanna make sure that we got the right people in the right places, and how does, how does our structure look in comparison to our peer cities, and how are they doing it? And maybe there's no magic answer, but if we don't solicit some outside information, you know, we don't know what we don't know. So, more to come on that. I'd also like, there's been a number of discussions about adding another committee, potentially a transportation committee, and I'd like that to be part of the discussion at our retreat. And I'm hopeful that if we're gonna change that structure, fold that onto also the committee assignments. So, I think it would be very important to have that retreat possibly in January. And so, Councilmember Karchardi wasn't sure he was gonna be able to make it tonight, so he already shared a couple of dates, January seventeenth or thirty-first. Does everybody have their calendars with them and wanna take a look at those dates? And if those aren't gonna work, I'd like to find a date that we can, and that's, those are Fridays. I'd heard from my last mayor's report, we kinda wanted to do the same format. We did it, it port of I ordered it in their banquet room, it ran most of a day. We had a facilitator, who was kinda the scribe, and then put a report together at the end.
What were your dates again?
Seventeenth or the thirty-first.
I would, I don't think I would be available on the thirty-first, I would be on the seventeen.
Seventeenth? I'm hearing seventeenth?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth?
Seventeenth.
I'm leaning towards the seventeenth, but I do need to check on when some of these other meetings fall.
Okay.
Okay, I can get back to you right away, though.
Okay.
When I get-
And I've gotta reach out to a facilitator, too, to make sure that-
Okay.
I have, thinking, Sophie Glass did a really, from Triangle, did a really nice job for us. I think she's excellent, and if you concur, I'll reach out to her, and she's, she was very reasonably priced, and I hope, I hope she'll do it for us again. So, okay, so, tentatively, the seventeenth. And I just wanted to share with you, too, Nick.
Today shared with me that the action we took related to allowing for the processing of building permits, but they won't be issued in the McCormick area, we have received twenty so far. So, which is fabulous to get a jumpstart on those plan reviews and get them through the process, so that, you know, when we're able to lift this moratorium, they, they can hit the ground running, and that we aren't the choke point.
Were those basics?
No.
No? Wow.
So.
She's got some work in them.
Yeah.
I thought they would've been a little bit higher. And that's fine.
Yeah.
I mean, we're, it's a step in the right direction.
It is.
It's only been a week.
It's only been a week.
I, I understand that, but I was thinking, I was thinking, you know, trying to be, be a little bit tense up in the demand, but, you know, that, again, we're ahead of the curve.
Yeah.
And it's good faith, too.
Yeah, it is. On December tenth, I sat through a presentation today with Kitsap County Commissioner Gredo, Eric Baker, and the consultant for the Kitsap County campus. It's really exciting, and I'm not gonna spoil the presentation. So, December tenth, we're gonna, is gonna kick off their public, their public outreach process, and it starts with parking, and late next year, a building should be starting on construction, on the new courthouse, yeah.
So, the meeting on the tenth is here?
The December tenth, our council meeting.
That's what I said.
It'll be our council meeting, a presentation for about thirty minutes. I sat through it today, it's, it's very, very informative. At the Economic Development Committee, there was a request that we do some more outreach on the plastic bag ban. There's a letter here that we're proposing. We think it's roughly three-hundred-ish businesses this would go out to. We did, we reached out to Bremerton, nobody else is, Bremerton's not doing a letter, though, but this letter would go with the flyer that the county is, has been putting out, and it, you know, it'll be roughly three, three-hundred-ish retail businesses that will, will try to send this out that, that have, you know, would be issuing bags. That's the number we're kinda targeting.
And there's kinda, we had a debate last week, none of us had the code in front of us, but just the differences between, you know, Food to Go and some of the other-
Yeah, there's a flyer that-
That kinda walks through all the different applications.
And then, this letter also, too, has, we've got a link on our webpage to the actual, all the, all those source documents. We learned, too, it's, I think it's called, is it Push? What's, what's the Facebook?
Boost.
Boost, okay. We can't do, as a government account, we can't do a boost, but we can pin things to the top of our page. We're learning, I'm learning about, more about Facebook than I want to. Right now, we're pinning our changes to speed limits, and I think that's more appropriate here for the next month, but after that, we're gonna pin the plastic bag ban, probably the month of December, as this is leading up to, so it'll always be the top of our feed, is what the pin does. And then, we've got a banner right now on our webpage for the speed limits, when the speed, after the speed limits have been there about a month, we're gonna change that banner out, and it'll be the plastic bags. So, that's the piece we're doing for the consumer pieces. But I've been, you know, out as Joe Consumer, you know, kinda asking, hey, you know, checkers and store managers, I run into them and stuff, and they, they're all, they, nobody is, I don't, that I've run into is gonna be surprised with. Matter of fact, the Safeway manager says, oh, no, we've been selling the heck out of the reusable bags, the heavier insulated ones.
That's because I always forget mine in my car and buy new sets, so I think I bought them out twice.
I, pretty soon, I'll have to, I don't know how many times, I get in the store and I go, oh, yeah, that's in the car, oh, just like you, next time. And so, now that it's gonna cost me something, I'm gonna turn around and go back and get that bag, I probably, is what I'll have to do. So, Community Center update. So, I had a meeting today with the executive board from the Public Facilities District and senior management at Kitsap Bank, and it was just some nice FaceTime with that board and the bank's board, and I thought there was some good progress there. We continue to work on the ILA between us and the Public Facilities Board. Matter of fact, Sharon did some review on that for us yesterday and today, and I sent it back over to them, the, the second version of that ILA back to them. So, I always feel like there's progress, but I always feel like, too, somebody keeps moving the, the goal line on me. So, I'm hopeful next Monday is the next meeting in Bremerton for the Public Facilities District, and I have a plan to attend next Monday evening. Chief Wright made me aware, I sit on the Kitsap 911 Board, and we were discussing this a few days ago. Thurston County, so, we have roughly here in Kitsap County, we have a very antiquated communication system for our first responders, and it, to the tune of, and the cost to replace this is gonna be about ten million dollars. And Thurston County has put a measure this November on the ballot, and we're watching it very closely, a one-tenth measure to pay for their, they have a very similar system to us. And so, I think you'll start here, depending on the outcome of that election, I think you might start hearing locally some noise about a ballot measure sometime next year or the following year to do something similar. If we're not successful in that, it will be, that ten million dollars will be assessed in user fees to the member jurisdictions, and we're one of those. So, we would have to pay our proportional share of that, and so, I don't know what that dollar amount is, but it's, it's not all of-
Maybe the taxing district here that would run the one-tenth of the county.
Kitsap 911.
Kitsap 911 would go, okay.
Yeah, yes. They have taxing authority currently. They would just carve out an addition, or ask for an additional one-tenth of one percent that would, sales tax that would fund these telecommunications improvements. So, that is the end of my report. Sorry, it was so lengthy. Question, question to that, or?
No, I was just thinking ten million dollars and-
Yeah.
But our portion maybe.
Yeah. Well, we don't have a fire district ourselves, I mean, but our citizens do, and they would, yeah, get stuck with that part, too. So, anyway.
But is it, telecommunications suggests the telephone 911?
No, 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 no. It's the radio system.
It's the radio system.
System, the bandwidth, the, the band that they're traveling in and all of those, that stuff, sending those signals out. And I, I really know a lot about this, obviously.
It's sort of emergency response equipment, right?
It's the emergency respond equipment, that's right.
It's not used every day, but it's needed when it's needed.
Oh, it's used every day.
It's their radio system.
Every 911 call. Every police call and dispatch.
What is, how much is what we have currently worth?
Nothing, it's, it's twenty years old.
Antiquated. The value in those systems is the frequency that's assigned to you.
How much is your flip phone worth?
Yeah, how much your flip phone worth? Or, or that, that old computer that's in the closet. So, with that-
Longer connect to AOL, is that it?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
What should we expect to hear Monday night at the PFT meeting?
I, I hinted at, I sure would like a commitment. That's what I've been asking for all along, for our, our project. It is so doggone political, with each one of, you know, we were voted, they, they went through this process and voted us the number-one project, but each, there's seven board members, one from each city, one from each commissioner's district, and it's so political, and I really sense they wanna spread peanut butter, and that isn't gonna fund any, you know, our project's a significant project, so's Paul's bow.
So, I thought the top three had kinda gotten together and looked at how that pie would be cut.
None of us have a vote.
Yeah.
So, yeah. It's so politi, I, I, I mean, I continue to work this issue very hard. As I said, I met with their executive board and the bank, just to get, allow them to, you know, get, I'm trying to convey to them the sense of urgency, that the bank isn't gonna stick around forever if we can't get some movement. They're gonna build a new headquarters, and I want it very badly, and I think you do, too, in our community. We don't wanna lose that business in our downtown. It's fifty jobs right now that would not be in our, in our downtown, and supporting our economy and our businesses. So, yeah, I'm, I'm frustrated, and matter of fact, they entered into an ILA with the racetrack, and it, and they, they said, well, it took us six months to come to an agreement with them, and I'm scratching my head, oh, I know why. A month ago, I was at their meeting, or three weeks ago, almost a month ago, I was at their meeting. It took them three weeks to get me the document that we turned around in two days. It was cutting and pasting two documents together. It, it's just, I don't know, it's very, it's very frustrating to me, there's no urgency on the other side at all. And I can't, I don't control that at all. So, with that, I will open up our second citizen comment period. Jerry?
Department?
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped our direct, just a second, Jerry, I skipped the directors. Half, most of them are gone, it'll go quick. Mr. Crocker, you, you talked all night, do you have anything else?
I'm good.
Okay. Sharon?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Chief?
Nope, we're good, we're just chugging along downstairs, so that's all good.
I saw there was a brand-new police car, one, the first one of the new group showed up today.
It did.
Got wires hanging everywhere, it needs some-
It does, no license plates, but everybody's already coating the new headlights for some reason, but, yeah, so some changes coming to that, but, yeah, we're, we've got one of the first ones in the county, so- But, uh, yeah, so some changes come to that, but, uh, um, yeah, we're, we've got one of the first ones in the county, so that's kinda lucky for us is that we're gonna slide those in ahead of the county shop, working on the county sheriff's cars, so we'll, we'll be out first.
What kind of rig is it?
It's a twenty-twenty.
Yep, twenty-twenty, uh, Crown, or not Crown Vic, a twenty-twenty Explorer.
Explorer, yeah. SUV.
Cool.
What color?
Black, right now, but I don't wanna write it.
Yeah, we're gonna move, uh, we're probably going to move to all marked vehicles as opposed to, right now, the sergeants have, uh, blacked out vehicles. We'll probably be fully marked.
Brandy?
Clerk's office will be registering that vehicle tomorrow, so they'll have plates, and then we'll insure it, and they can drive, drive it. So other than that, that's all I have.
Other than there's wires hanging everywhere where things get plugged into. Jerry? Sorry to hold you up.
Um, Jerry Harmon, the first, I had a couple of things. The first thing is, on, I like this, but I, I would sure like to know on some of these that had increases, what the increases were for, like the water fund, I don't know anything about it, but it wa- went up a million four, and it was only set at two million. So that's almost like, um-
So I can answer that, Jerry? So we, remember we had a water and sewer combined fund?
Uh-huh.
And we, and we went in this biennial budget, we broke them, separated sewer from water, and so that's the old fund. So it's not authorizing a million two more, it's closing that fund out, and we're moving it, we're into the two other funds.
Okay, I was just wondering, all of these, you know, some of them, they're only seven hundred thousand or, you know, three hundred thousand, but it would, I, since I don't know anything about it and I'm not part of it, I just, on things that, um, it would just be interesting.
I wasn't at the works-
If there was just a comment like-
Yeah.
Um, this broke and we had to buy, you know, like, on the wells or something on that. And then I was on the fireworks, I know you're probably having a, a meeting in that, but I just had relatives move up from California, and they could not believe that people, you know, they can't have fireworks in California. They may have, you know, um, a public organization have it, but, um, when they get up at five-thirty, they head off for Bangor, or they get up and are at work at five-thirty, they were a little upset about hearing fireworks all night long, which they don't have at home, or what, where they moved from. Um, and I was gonna say, until my new roof, um, I didn't feel safe not being at home because I had a cedar shake roof, and the fireworks coming from the park above, I had to clean my yard of the rockets that were coming down. And, um, then maybe the reserve nine-one, when you're working on the budget, a little bit this year, a little bit next year, kinda tucking it away, and if it's not used, it's not used, but start planning ahead for it. And then I was wondering, how many non-union employees does our, I would assume that the police are union, and maybe Public Works are union. It would seem like secretaries should have some sort of a union, I just wonder-
Is it about twenty, non-union?
I think we're pretty much one-third, 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 um, because we have two different unions.
Yeah, so about, maybe, less than thirty, Jerry, more than twenty?
Okay, okay. I was just wondering on that, and I guess that's everything that I was wondering about for this meeting. Thank you.
Okay.
Jerry, Jerry, the finance director actually put, um, information on your seat that explains, um, some of that funding.
Oh, okay. And a lot of those tran- were transfers, closing out funds, because we've created different funds to be, try to be more transparent with those sewer and water dollars. So. All right, Heidi, we're down to our last, you're the last citizen in the, in the room, you want your moment in time?
No, I'm okay.
All right. Mr. Clausen, you have something for the good of the order?
I, I do, just to, to announce that the transit system is going to be holding a community meeting this coming Saturday at nine-thirty at the Harper Church to, to start the dialogue on the creation of the Southworth Passenger Ferry.
Nice. And that meeting's here at City Hall?
No, it's at the Harper Church.
Harper Church, okay.
Right now, we have about a hundred and twenty-five that has RSVP for that meeting, so.
How big is that park and ride lot?
Oh, it's huge. I don't know off the top of my head, but it's got lots of space.
Okay, that's great.
And about, maybe ten to fifteen percent of it is being used right now.
Wow.
How far along are those, those two boats in the construction? Are they looking like holes yet, or are they still piles of steel? One of them's looking like a boat?
Yeah, one of them's looking like a hole.
Oh, okay. All right, wonderful. With that-
We're gonna have some updated photographs of the current state of construction that we'll have available to show on Saturday.
All right. With that, no executive session unless there's something you guys wanna meet about.
For a second.
It's been a while since we haven't had one, so. With that, uh, the meeting's adjourned.